Okay, the usual, please, okay. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-ATSEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call. Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. De Crosse.
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Pett, oops, Mr. Petty's not here. Mr. Ready.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairwoman Grignani.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Could you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Aye.
The United States of America and to the Republic of Mr. Stevens, on a nation under the Constitution of the United States of America.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand? Just swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone in the public speak, would like to speak on something other than is not on our agenda for this evening? I see.
Chairman, before we start, I would request that maybe we all just take a moment of silence to remember the Kirk family and help repair our nation this total disrepair.
Yes, please may we have a moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. Willins.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have correspondence received from Steve Sheppis, requesting application 2438 be carried to October 22nd, 2025 without further notice and grant an extension of time for the board to make decision on the case. This hearing will be held at Persipony High School on Baldwin Road.
That's September 17th, right?
No, it's the 22nd, we're not going to do the 17th.
So 17th is off.
17th is off.
We're free next week.
Next week you're free. Yeah, we already made plans.
Chairman, may I just make a brief comment?
Brief?
Just so everything's clear, my letter did originally ask for the 17th, but I understood there was some issue with scheduling and the board having to publish notice as the special meeting, so I do ask that it be carried to the 22nd of October, 22nd?
Yes.
October 22nd, 20...
2025.
2025 at 7:30 PM at Persipony High School, so you have my consent, you, my letter may have said something different. Thank you, Mr. Sheppis.
Thank you, we appreciate it, thank you, sir. We have approval of the 2026 meeting schedule?
We all, you need a motion.
Yes, may we have a motion, please?
Yes, some of.
Second?
Second.
The resolution.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nora, resolutions, please?
The meeting schedule, sorry.
No, the meeting.
The meeting schedule.
I got your best up.
Didn't I just do the meeting schedule?
No, I interrupted you when you were doing it.
Oh, okay. Yes, we only have one that we're not going to be able to do, I apologize. Okay, so we have application 2520, I'm sorry, not that one, we have, we have application 2523 and 2531. Those who can vote are Berkowitz, Jaskowitz, Mozzarella, Petty, Quinn, they're not here, Ready and Willins. Can I have a motion?
Vote.
Second.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Approved.
Schedule, we didn't do the schedule, Nora.
Yes.
You want to do what you want, Nora?
Whatever you go.
Do you want the dates of the schedule?
No, approval of the proposed meeting schedule.
Okay.
I just have a question on the schedule. I'm just curious, that come the two early dates in January?
Because I try to stick to the first and third weeks of the month and there is a, on the third week, there is a holiday, same with the following month. Okay.
Oh, okay. Do you have an issue? I just wish we didn't have so many holidays.
So, we are approving the meeting schedule of 2026, everyone has received a copy, is there a motion? Motion was made by Mr. De Crosse.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay. Application.
Okay.
Application 25:04, Gina Simmons, 20 Upper Rainbow Trail Block 117 Lot 12, Zone R3, C variance to construct first floor additions, second floor addition, covered front porch with front stairs, second floor covered deck, balcony over first floor deck, front walk expansion, an AC unit on a concrete pad contrary to section 430-35 Columns 5, 8, 10, and 13. This application was carried from the June 25th meeting, 2025. Simmons?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your name, spell your last name, please, starting with U-M. Yes, you can, yes, you can sit down.
Okay, thank you. Gina Simmons, S-I-M-M-O-N-S is the last name.
And you are?
William Lutz.
And how do you spell your last name?
L-U-T-Z.
And why don't you tell the board what it is that you'd like to do?
Sure, so we are going to have basically make our current main floor into an open floor plan and then put bedrooms on the, on the other floor, above. Can you hear me, okay?
Please begin to...
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, the current main floor that we are, what we are mainly living on now, we are putting into like an open floor configuration and moving the bedrooms upstairs, so move...
What's going to be upstairs?
Three bedrooms.
How many bedrooms on the first floor now?
Three bedrooms.
Small.
Yes. And then, right now, the, the top floor, whatever, is a loft, it's very small, but it's still considered right now a bedroom with a bathroom, which is very tight.
When you were here in June, did you actually come to the hearing?
No, there was no, 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 we, something with the newspaper ads wasn't ready or something.
Oh, okay, so you weren't here actually?
No, we weren't physically here.
Okay. Have you had a chance to review the report from the municipal engineer dated April 28th, 2025, does that ring a bell at all? To either one of you? Oh, I'm not sure who that is that's speaking.
Who's talking?
Sorry, this is our contractors.
It's okay. I just want to make sure the record's clear.
Christina, ask Serena, okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to speak on it?
Yeah, so we did have a chance to review that and we had Tom Graham with Dykstra put a stormwater management plan together and was emailed to the township engineer and we also have copies with us today.
Okay, do you have anybody coming to testify today or is it just the two of you?
Just the two.
Do you have any response from the township engineer in terms of the stormwater management? When, when did you give it to him?
I, I believe Tom emailed it on Monday.
Oh.
So, Tom, on Monday.
Okay, so you have a plan to rectify what he asked you to try and address, you had an engineer to address it, put the plan to the engineer, but we haven't heard back from him.
Right.
No, he didn't hear the response, didn't he email?
No, since Monday.
So, your engineer provided something to the township engineer that you believe addressed the township engineer's concerns?
Correct.
But it didn't get over there until Monday?
Uh, no, he was over prior, but he emailed the township engineer on Monday.
And you believe that was a set of plans?
Oh, yes.
Yes, we have them with us.
Right, it's, it's fine that you have them with you, but you don't have your engineer here to testify that those plans satisfy the concerns of the township engineer, that's kind of where we're a little stuck.
What we'd be looking actually for is the town engineer to sign off on them.
Yeah.
Then you're good to go on that. Which, because there was fairly extensive report that he had, and that's why he got the engineer involved.
So usually for us to move forward and render a decision, we would get the response from the municipal engineer, which would guide us, so it's kind of tough to approve an application without getting that.
Have you any, any communication with your engineer, meaning did he get back to you and say, "The town engineer's okay with it, I've just got to get this on a plan, get it over to him," or anything of that order?
You were corresponding.
Yeah, no, he didn't give any information that he spoke with the township engineer, he did obviously CC him on the email.
Do you have a clue as to how extensive this stormwater management plan is?
Yeah, I, I looked it over, so...
You're not getting it over your head, is really what I'm going?
No.
Okay. You're going to be able to manage it?
Yes, correct.
But sometimes we get plans in here and all of a sudden, the stormwater management plan is more costly than the improvement.
Understood.
So based on what your engineer did for you, you're willing to do what he said you should do to appease it, township engineer agrees, then you can proceed, brother.
Correct.
But the problem is what happens if it's an out.
Yeah, we can't, we can't.
The, the problem is that you, we're not saying that you did anything wrong.
Yeah.
But you don't have your engineer here to explain to the board that all the concerns raised by the municipal engineer have been satisfied. I'm not saying they haven't, I'm not saying they have, but you don't have anyone here to testify that they have, and so you might not want to move forward tonight because you're lacking that key piece of evidence. So, and, and this board may not want to move forward tonight because they don't have anything from the municipal engineer that says that the plan that your engineer proposed is going to address those issues. So, you probably want to carry this matter one more time, I understand it delays everything, but in order to make sure that everything's buttoned up, you may want to ask the board to carry it one more time, just to make sure that you're not getting, that you can satisfy the concerns of the municipal engineer, you're not getting into anything over your heads. Is that what you want to do?
Yeah, protects you.
Okay.
Bottom line, you ought to get on the phone to the town engineer, tell him who you are, find out what his position is on this plan, as opposed to engage your engineer to go spend his time and spend your money. And then have your engineer here. If the town engineer signs off on it, then that issue is over, which is the fundamental issue.
Understood.
And the engineer won't have to be here?
No. Assume that the town engineer says yes.
Right.
If he doesn't, I think you're going to have to keep, keep after it.
Okay, Nora, may we have a date to carry?
That's what you want to do, right? Just you have to say yes for the record, so I understand that that's exactly what you want to do, is that what you, is that what you guys want to do? You want the board to carry this?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
I jumped the gun a little bit. I guess that plans had already been submitted to the engineer, so you'll have to already get, uh, October 8th.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move it to October 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you October.
We'll see you October 8th.
Thank you.
Very well.
Patil, 2530, 139 Teal Chris Road. Good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you please, you can sit down. Can you please state your name and spell your last name?
Last name is Patil, P-A-T-I-L.
And how do you pronounce your first name?
Chudubai.
Thanks, thank you. And what is it, can you tell the board what it is that you want to do?
So basically, I want to replace the existing fence that I have, it's a chain link fence with a slate in it, so I want to replace it with a modern fence, which is like a vinyl one.
It appears as though you want the fence to be six feet hole, six feet tall, correct?
Yes.
Why do you want the fence to be six feet tall?
It's for privacy and the animals keep, like, bothering, right?
But why can't it be four feet tall? I'm just asking because that's the variance that you're asking for.
The variance basically is, it's slightly like a broken or shaggy, so I want to replace it, that's the one, so...
Is the existing fence six feet tall?
Uh, like five and a half or around.
Five and a half feet tall? Yeah, okay.
But somewhere there, it's not like a standard.
Is Atlantic Drive actually exist, is there a road behind you in your backyard?
Basically, there's a corner lot and, so that it is on the Atlantic and Philcris.
And Atlantic Drive is an approved road, it's, it's a street? Is there traffic on that road?
There is a traffic.
And you also want the fence to be solid as opposed to 50% see-through, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Why is that that you want the fence to be solid?
Uh, that's for the privacy. Right now it is open, but the house, the way it is constructed, it's like actually a back up. There was also existing swimming pool, which has already been closed.
So it's a total five feet. So pool's gone?
I removed the pool, I closed it, I didn't need it.
You removed the pool?
Yes.
And you're not putting new, one in later?
Uh, at least for now, I don't need it.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of trees and it's actually more work than actually, you know, used.
So could you be happy with a four foot plus a one foot lattice?
Total of five feet.
Total of five feet, that would save yourself a lot of headache here.
Uh, let me check with my wife, is that fine?
Just so, before you, before you check...
She wasn't ready for that.
You're a smart man, I guess, but we, we don't approve six foot high solid fences. Yeah, before she answers, just so you know, this, that, that, your type of application comes probably once a month, and the only ones that have been approved are four foot solid, one foot lattice. Which was just offered.
That is fine, okay, it's okay.
Good idea.
Okay.
She's got ideas.
Any other questions on the board?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this application, either for or against? I don't see any, yeah.
Okay.
Somebody like to?
This is a reasonable request for the privacy of the house, I'm in favor of this.
Application 25:30, Chatabai, Till, 139 Teal Chris Road Block 205 Lot 1 Zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to install a five foot high total, four foot plus one foot lattice contrary to section 430-11A and B.
Second.
Yes.
De Crosse?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Once, you should be, you should be notified within 10 days and then you can go to the zoning office and receive your permits. Okay, lots of luck.
Thank you very much, members.
Keen, application 2526, 10 Arnold Drive Block 698 Lot 62 Zone R3, a C variance to construct an in-ground pool and patio, pool equipment and walk expansion contrary to section 430-35 Column 13.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Then you can sit down, please, and state your name and spell your last name.
Jonathan Keen, K-E-E-N-E.
And tell the board what it is that you'd like to do.
Uh, we're looking to replace our existing pool with a new in-ground pool.
So slightly smaller than the existing?
Yes.
What is the notation, covered, in-ground pool covered mean? You putting a roof over this?
No.
Is that just your covering for the winter? That your pool?
Yeah, I think that's just a cover for the winter.
Is that what it is?
Okay, so effectively, the township requires that even though it's water surface, it's considered impervious, if they didn't measure that pool, but solely the concrete outside frame, you probably wouldn't be...
And you're reducing?
Size.
The size.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just like the old...
Reducing, he's actually got, he's going down... He's reducing the purpose of the pool.
Yeah.
And the engineer has no issue with this?
No.
Okay, that's an easy one.
I think this looks like pretty luminous request and I'm going to be able to be in favor of it.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
No.
No? Would like, someone like to frame a resolution?
You want to just ask if anybody in the audience?
Oh, I'm, yes, sorry, anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor of or against this applicant and the testimony that he has given? I see.
Application 25:26, Jonathan Keen, 10 Arnold Drive Block 698 Lot 62 Zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct an in-ground pool patio, pool equipment and walk expansion contrary to section 430-35 Column 13.
Second, ready?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
De Crosse?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willins?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, enjoy.
Yes. You'll enjoy it next year.
Yes. Yeah.
Sebastian Gray, Gay, application 25:29, Reed Deville Drive Block 753 Lots 57, Zone R2, C variance to construct a shed and patio contrary to section 430-35 Columns 10 and 13. Good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You can have a seat, state your name, spell your last name, please.
Sebastian Gay, Gay, G-A-Y.
And tell the board what it is that you'd like to do.
I'd like to replace the existing deck and expand the coverage area with a patio in front of, I guess, a door that leads to the outside, which is currently just...
Can you put the microphone a little bit closer?
I'm trying to replace the existing deck as well as expand the coverage area in front of a door that leads to the backyard, which is currently just dirt and is not usable.
Okay, there's a memo from the township engineer dated August 15th of 2025, have you seen that memo?
I have not seen that memo.
I have a copy for you.
Okay.
But it's fairly extensive.
When will you submit this?
And you may want to discuss the issues raised in that memo with the municipal engineer before you move forward on this application, both so you understand what you might be getting yourself into in terms of stormwater management, and so, because maybe you've modified your plans to address those issues because you're going to have to at some point in time do that. He also indicates that there hasn't been any grading information provided and that may be necessary, so it might be wise for you to ask the board to carry this matter to another date so you can have those discussions and find out exactly what it is that you're getting yourself into with respect to this project.
Okay.
That should have been, supposedly it was mailed to you August 15th, so...
Okay, I don't believe I received it.
So would you like to carry this application to a later date so you can address those issues?
Yes.
I think that would be wise.
Thank you. Nora, may we have a carry date, please? Let's put them on October 8th. Okay.
I thought we had one of, oh, they're the same.
Yep, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're good.
October 8th.
Okay, thank you.
October 8th, please come back. Actually, is October 8th not enough time if he hasn't created?
You, you might want more time than that.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe October 22nd.
Yes, 22nd.
Is that, is that...
Not October 22nd, it's October 29th.
29, you're right, you're right.
Contact the engineering department, go over the issues that they have, and we'll see you on the 29th.
All right, thank you.
You're, the memo that the engineer provided talks about a drywall shown on your survey, but the survey we have doesn't show it, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's something, so I went to, I guess, engineering and I talked to Brandon, he provided me with the drywall calculation that I was supposed to do, it was great help and I measured it, and so that's what's showing on the proposed plan, it's not existing, it's to be built, and to address that issue actually, only half the roof.
I wonder, interrupt, the memo from the township engineer is, mentions the drywall, but then he goes on to say that the improvements here may be very expensive, and I think you need to get back with him, he needs a different report. That's one of the things, we just, it doesn't make sense to make it subject to the township engineer's improvement and the, and the drywall, the water system costs more than anything else.
Okay.
So you...
Well, I had the drywall prices...
But you did meet with him to talk about this. Hmm, okay, uh, let's do it again.
All right, thank you.
Chair on the 29th.
Application 25:27, Michael and Jennifer, Jessica, excuse me, Nemeth, 289 Allentown Road Block 271 Lot 23, Zone R4, C variance to legalize a gazebo, rear wall, patio and driveway contrary to section 430-35 Column 13.
Raise your right hand, please, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You can sit down, state your name, spell your last name.
Michael Nemeth, N-E-M-E-T-H.
So, I understand that you're here to legalize things that are pre-existing, that have already been constructed.
Correct.
Okay, have you seen the memo from the municipal engineer dated August 15th of 2025?
No.
These memos aren't sent to the app, let's go down with it.
You know, it's, it, things are being corrected over there, the person who had been handling this stuff has left the township and it's, things are actually starting to catch up and be timely, but these last few...
I have an extra copy. You've probably heard some of the prior applications.
Yeah.
So it may be in your best interest to ask the board to carry this matter so that you can have a discussion with the municipal engineer about how you might address the concerns regarding stormwater. Especially because your improvements are currently on site, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you wouldn't want to have to take those out, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
So you'd probably rather address the stormwater issues than do that, right?
Same thing.
So you want the board to carry this matter, so you have a chance to do that?
Sure, and just, I've been working directly with, with Robert and Michael in zoning for leading up to this.
Okay.
Should I go back, I mean, we met with Justin originally when the first came up.
Okay, so did you, did you have any plans prepared that would address the concerns?
When, we were notified when they, when engineering first came, actually when we were finishing up work, when the, the issue first arose, we went to Justin, immediately talked to Brandon, filled out the permit for the driveway, and he said, you know, give me the check, we'll, we'll file the permit, you guys are almost done, come back on next Come back on next week, let us know when you're finished, we'll come check it out, et cetera. Then I don't know how that changed from when we talked to Justin originally, um but then zoning got involved afterwards and that's how it all transpired from there. So I'm totally okay with with carrying it. I just wanna make sure that we do it the right way. I just wanna make sure because we haven't worked at all with engineering directly since that point, that we're going to the right the right people, that's all.
Yeah, it sounds like you are. You're gonna go back to
To Justin.
At municipal engineering.
Okay.
Specifically address the concerns in his August fifteenth memo.
Okay, understood. So should we should we expect that to come too in the mail when? This is just a copy and that's good.
No, you have to go.
No, I understand, but the notice that was that was mailed, this is the same, okay.
Yeah.
That's the same thing that
Got it.
That you should have gotten in the mail.
Okay.
So you're asking the board to carry it, right?
Please, yes.
How do you fill out a special half hour on November fifth?
November fifth? What happened in November eighth?
October eighth.
November eighth?
November fifth, that's seven, you're you're proposing Nora?
Right, because the October eighth John's speaking about um he hasn't, he doesn't have.
No, I I I wasn't being.
That's okay.
October twenty ninth is too full? Is that what you're thinking?
Uh yes.
Okay, I'm fine. I I'm happy to come in at seven o'clock.
You know what, um?
Yeah, me too.
October twenty, that was the other one we put on that day. Yeah, let's do November fifth.
At seven o'clock.
Seven P M.
November fifth at seven o'clock.
At seven P M.
Understood.
Is there anyone here in regard to this application?
All right, you you seem to be concerned about the dates. Is there someone?
No, 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 she's the boss. Oh, I've missed the missus is the boss, so I was just making sure we're good.
Just making sure.
We'll see you on November the fifth. Okay, we have a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call, please. All in favor? Okay, November the fifth, seven o'clock.
Thank you very much.
That meeting's at seven o'clock, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, right.
Application twenty-four colon seventy-eight, Michael and Maria Sheehan, eight Stafford Terrace, block seven forty-two, lot fifty-six. Zone R two, sea variance to construct a new single-family dwelling and deck. Legalize an in-ground pool, patio and shed contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns two seven nine. Rear yard, open deck, pool equipment, pool and patio thirteen and section four thirty dash ten, rear yard shed.
Mr. O'Neil, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Joseph O'Neil of Garifal O'Neil Ruggiero here on behalf of the Sheehans. Just like to make a couple introductory comments if I may. You're what you're looking at here is an application to replace a house that burned down. We are exactly replacing that footprint of a house with some modifications inside really imperceptible from the outside. We are not adding a single lick of impervious coverage, but we are legalizing apparently what were unapproved pools and other structures that were done by the prior owners.
How long ago?
We bought the house thirty-one years ago.
Can you just raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth? State your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Michael Sheehan, S H E E H A N.
Great, thank you.
Did I hear a plural in that one?
No.
In the pool.
Oh, no, no.
Pools.
Well, there's only one pool. There's two pools on the site because there was a koi pond next to the house and apparently the koi fish are in the above-ground pool.
Next statement, um they were transported temporarily into the above-ground pool, which is basically a ten-foot by three-foot, you know, put together in an hour thing. Um that can be disassembled within an hour because the fish are now back in the koi pond.
Okay.
So you have a koi pond and an in-ground pool.
Uh and correct.
Now, this uh house that we're replacing is on a lot that's a little lower than the other lots in the neighborhood. There's a significant wetlands behind it and on the lot is a municipal culvert. It all works fine, nothing backs up, but there's a lot of water flowing across this lot. So you guys are getting ready to ask me if I've seen the engineer's letter. And I have seen the engineer's letter. But what I am asking for at this point is that the board approve this project and defer the engineering review to the building permit process.
Why you wanna do that, Mr. O'Neil?
Well, there's a couple reasons. Okay, the primary reason is.
Well, before we get to that, have we had discussion on what this structure is? Whether it's a one-family or a two-family home?
It's gonna be a one-family home.
We have plans here for from August the fourth, twenty twenty-five, that shows a kitchen.
There should only be one kitchen. It amended the application to remove that kitchen.
Totally remove the kitchen?
Yeah.
The plan we have in front of us are dated.
Kitchen is on the second floor, the recreation.
August first, twenty-five. Is that the latest date? When did you? The the arrangement on this house, when I come in the front door to access the lower portion of the building, which has five and six labeled bedroom. I go through a corridor into the and to get to the second floor, I have a staircase that leads up to the second floor. And the it's saying the only kitchen in this building will be on the second floor.
I see that. That's correct.
What are what are the wet bar area and recreation room and those facilities?
Not a kitchen because it's not gonna have an oven. It's just gonna be a sink, faucet, maybe a small refrigerator.
Like a Red Buck?
Like a wet bar.
Yeah, like a wet bar.
And you have two bedrooms on that level and a full bath, correct?
I believe that.
Yes.
I think. How do we address the issue here, which is the engineer's letter? So the engineer's making a lot of requests for us to do design work on stormwater management. Now, under the municipal land use law forty fifty-five D dash thirty-seven, if anyone wants to look it up, section A says single-family homes are exempt from site plan requirements. Everything in that letter is indicating we need a site plan. If you look at the way your stormwater management ordinance is adopted twenty-five, two twenty-five dash one oh three, you'll see that a lot of the elements that need to be put into plan are site plan elements. So now we're exempt from that. I've reviewed that stormwater report. But I think that that could be more properly handled in the permitting process because it doesn't specifically say board approvals, it just says approvals. So I think that could be handled in the permitting process and removed from this board and allow this application to go forward and put in our proofs. We'll discuss the house, the number of bedrooms, the koi pond and the pool and everything else, but the stormwater testimony for something like this on this lot would be very extensive. And I'm not exactly convinced. I have it. I had a call with uh Mr. Liza about this, but we didn't discuss the merits of it. I'm not completely convinced that existing thirty-year structures count towards the disturbances that would be applicable for the stormwater regs. I think the thing, I was surprised to get the letter. I thought it was gonna be exempt.
So who?
Stormwater regs say if it's an existing structure or whatever, you don't have to count it to the new numbers. So there's a lot of issues with that.
So who do you think is the proper body to decide that issue?
I think the proper official is the construction official to make sure that's part of the approvals that get in the packet along with the building permits and everything else. It'd be approved by Justin at that level. And if it's not approved, then they can't get a certificate of occupancy.
And then you have to come back to us?
If the design change, but we have an engineer. He's very confident it's gonna be fine because it's been working in the past and we're not adding anything.
I had spoke, I don't mean to interrupt. I spoke with the engineering department today and I specifically asked uh that, you know, who inspects the, you know, stormwater management measures and they said they do.
Okay.
Not construction.
Not sure.
Yeah, but they don't sign off.
Not sure. I think the issue here is that the there's an imperv, there's a lot coverage variance that probably speaks to the pool that went installed without permits. If the pool was installed with permits, then you would have stormwater management for it. No, I I disagree. I don't, the the regs do not say it has to be approved structure. It just says pre-existing structure. So I think the regs would exemplify. So you're saying an illegal structure counts? It's been there thirty years, still illegal. But still illegal. Yeah, it was never approved. But it's existing structure. You can't just will it away.
Yes, you can.
It wasn't.
No, you can't. Not a, no you can't.
But if you never got a variance for the structure in the first place, the structure needs a variance.
Which is what we're here doing for the pool. Yeah, we're absolutely doing that. I got no problem talking about it.
Doesn't that trigger the stormwater requirement? Because it's not an approved structure.
No.
Because if it had been approved at the time it was constructed, then it would have been subject to whatever requirements existed at that time.
Could I try something here? I'm sorry. So we're talking about a property site that had an in-ground existing pool for thirty-one years. We had a house, the house burnt down. Now we wanna build a house back.
Right.
We wanna reuse the pool that was there for thirty-one years. You'd like us to prove that pool that's been there for thirty-one years, okay? I I'm I'm sorry, I'm not sure why that's a big problem. Uh and now impervious coverage and all this other stuff, if the applicant, according to their attorney's willing to put the other thing on permitting back to occupancy, I I I can't see why we would not be approving things going on here being requested. It's all pre-existing. It's non-conforming pre-existing, but still, it's been existing for thirty-one years.
And also a pool is uh considered as a collecting the water, right?
Do we have any opposition or anybody who's gonna tell us and do you have neighbors that are getting any water?
No, all that water comes to us.
All the water comes to you.
You're the lower area.
Yes.
They're below.
Yeah, they're below.
I think Mr. Will's point makes sense to me.
I I I think it makes sense too.
And you indicated, Mr. O'Neil, that your client is willing to seek approval of those stormwater management issues at the time that he is going for his certificate of occupancy as part of the building permit process.
Make a condition of the approval here.
Well, before you before you get a building permit, you should have an answer to that question.
The answer is yes.
I mean, you're not gonna build a building and then try to get some water management approval. You're gonna get it before you get a permit issued.
That's right.
Okay, you agree to that?
I agree to that, but it's not a zoning condition.
Right, right, but you you're representing other record and we can draft language in the resolution to deal with this representation that you will seek approval of the stormwater management measures prior to seeking a building permit.
Yes.
Right, so that you can't argue something here
Right.
and then go in front of them and argue something
Right.
the opposite and bypass it. Is that what you're thinking, Mr. Corson?
No, we're gonna, yeah, we're we'll do, we'll eventually come to some kind of an agreement with Mr. Liza as to what needs to be done. I'm not gonna concede that I think it's gonna need that stormwater plan because I don't think it does. But I can roll for it every once in a while, so I'm willing to allow for that.
So this is a single-family home, not a two-family home?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. It's replacing a house that was there for thirty years that you lived in for those thirty years?
Well, the house was actually built in seventy-two. But we've been there for thirty-one years.
You have any other questions from the board?
Nope.
What, do you wanna put your proof in?
Yeah, I'm gonna go forward with the application.
Right, I understand.
Fair amount of variances.
I guess the question is, have we, is everyone satisfied with respect to the stormwater issue?
I am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Sheehan, we're gonna talk about what happened to the house. Mr. Sheehan, you've been sworn already. You already indicated to the board as I was doing my narrative about the condition of the lot itself, being a little low lying. But your uh your house burned down last year and uh the site is now being cleared after some delay. Just as I believe the chimney and the uh
A part of the chimney and the slab remaining.
So the property has been completely cleaned, cleared of any of the debris from the of the fire, the remains of the fire.
Correct, correct. We do have a small dumpster on site for anything that we're finding in the shed that we wanna get rid of, you know, but that's it.
And I do wanna make sure you confirm what I said about the pipe. It's not really backing up onto your property.
Correct. Extreme conditions, you know, it is, I believe, a twenty or twenty-two inch conduit.
It's working well.
Yes.
I have no further questions for this witness, although he is a professional about the site and houses though.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The shed and the patio, are they the same age as the pool?
Um well, from what I understand, the um everything is at least thirty-one years old. I don't know, you know, if it was done prior to that.
Let me ask the question differently. When you bought the house, the shed, this patio and the pool were there.
Correct.
And that's the way you're keeping it for now.
Correct.
Shed's in good shape?
I'm sorry?
Shed's in good shape?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Corson.
Any questions of this witness?
Do we have any questions of Mr. Sheehan? Any people in the audience that would like to question the applicant on the information that he has given us this evening? Sina, Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Peter Corson, spelled K O R Z E N. Mr. Corson, you've appeared before this board numerous times, have you? I have. I would offer him again as a witness, an expert and engineer.
Is acceptable.
Thank you. So we have here the existing conditions and zoning plan. This is last revised July eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And the subject property is on the west side of Stafford Terrace. It's in the R two zone, um has an odd configuration. Also, the lot size is well undersized, about twenty-five percent undersized. It's twenty-two thousand five hundred thirty-four square feet, where the minimum in the zone is thirty thousand square feet. So you can see the boundary lines here, the the bold double-dash lines kind of jogs back and then heads out towards Stafford Terrace. There are residential properties on the south and north side that are both both part of the subdivision. Uh there's also the Bethany Church property in the back. And as you heard, the topography all slopes downward from the road and also from the neighbors to the south and north. Uh the improvements on the property include the bi-level dwelling, which is situated pretty much at the front setback line. There's also a driveway from Stafford Terrace that leads to a side entry garage. In back of that is the in-ground pool, the patio around the pool. And in the back of the pool is the shed at the very northerly corner of of the site. Uh in back of the house is a large elevated deck above a a concrete patio. Uh to the south of that is a smaller deck and in between the two is the koi pond that you've heard about. Uh to um as far as drainage goes, you heard about the culvert. That culvert is a twenty-one inch that starts at the head wall and ends in the township's storm sewer system. Uh there's also onsite drainage, which is a gravel drainage channel on the northerly property line that connects to a drainage ditch which runs uh along the westerly property line and across portion of the Bethany Church site. Uh there's also a fifteen-inch pipe segment before it gets to another ditch and then that connects to the head wall. The proposed improvements are very minor and they include a trimming back of the
a trimming back of the deck because it encroaches over the property line. Naturally, what's shown on this plan is a little different than what they propose. What's shown is clipping the corner of the patio and concrete, I'm sorry, the deck and the concrete patio underneath it, back one foot from the property line. Instead, what they want to do, they don't need that entire area, so they're going to start at one foot back and just have a line parallel to the back of the house. So even more impervious surface is going to be removed because of that. The other modification is going to be replacing the dwelling and raising it up slightly. The garage slab will be raised up slightly. You'll hear more about that from the project architect. I believe it's a four-inch raise on the garage slab, and to accommodate the transition from the asphalt driveway into the garage, just a minor ramp will be constructed, probably six feet long, six foot wide, just to get into the garage. As you can see in the upper right, there's a zoning data table, and you heard about the variances. There is a 10-foot setback requirement for decks, and this happens to be encroaching on the neighboring property by 1.1 feet. So we are proposing to correct that, but there is a variance required. It's just due to the odd configuration of this lot and that property line in the back. The other variances for the impervious coverage, and you've heard a lot about that, there's a maximum of 4,506 square feet permitted. And what's currently on the property is 7,253 square feet. We are removing some, but it's still a variance condition. And a good part of that has to do with the fact that this lot is undersized. So considering all of that, I'm not testifying as a planner, but I don't see any detriments to the surrounding property or the public good, especially considering that this is the low end of, or low spot of the surrounding area. And I'm not sure if you want me to address anything in Mr. Lees' memo, but I have read
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Corson.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, what would the impervious coverage be without the pool?
The pool is, it's actually on a chart here. You can see the pool itself. The water is one, pool water is 651 square feet.
I see a, it's a small print from
651 square feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Approximately, what would that reduce the impervious coverage?
Again, this is going to change because
Not a lot, but
Yeah, it'll change because the applicant is going to modify the deck a little bit from what's shown, but
Ballpark. Doesn't matter.
6,597 square feet. So if this was a 30,000-square-foot lot, there would be permitted 6,000 square feet.
Goodbye. Mr. O'Neill, do you know if your client ever contacted the church in acquiring that low area that's behind his house?
Yes, numerous times, numerous times.
And then
For both purchasing and to try to get an easement, there's no interest. Couldn't do anything in a commercially feasible way.
And they can't really use it. It's all wetland, isn't it?
Well, I tried to tell them that, and they didn't believe me.
Okay.
They didn't believe you.
Do you know the total square footage of the deck that's going to be removed?
Removed or replaced?
Removed. You're going to cut some of that off. The deck, is the deck currently existing or is that, was that only removed? It's existing, but it was damaged in the fire. It's gone now. So what will be the new size of the deck? Ballpark, the plan shows that only five square feet being removed, but they want to change that. They want to remove even more. It'll probably be another 50 square feet. I just want to make sure that the resolution Yeah, we'll have the correct number for the resolution. Okay. Yeah. Can you get that to Mr. O'Neill, and he can get it to me? Definitely. Make sure the resolution reflects that? Yep. I did have another question. On the upper right-hand corner of the lot, is that also a drainage feature right on the edge of the lot? Yeah, there is another, similar to the drainage channel that runs along the northerly property line. There's another one that heads down from off-site, and that connects with that one. And then that enters an earthen drainage channel which runs along the, through the Bethany Church property. And that all eventually goes to that culvert, right? It does, yeah.
Your client said that he really, this property doesn't flood. That's right, it works.
And the footprint of the new house will be on the exact same footprint as the previous house? Yes, and our project architect is here.
Any other questions from the board here?
Nope.
Anyone in the audience have any questions of this gentleman on the testimony that he has given only? I see.
Thank you, Mr. Corson. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please, you can sit down, state your names, spell your last name.
Douglas Asral, A-S-R-A-L, registered architect, State of New Jersey.
Mr. Asral, would you mind giving the board, please, the benefit of your experience?
I've appeared before this board twice in the past year, and before other boards in Morris County area, and most recently Madison, Flora Park, and Chatham.
So I'd submit him as an expert for architectural purposes, please.
He's acceptable.
Mr. Asral, you will, of course, right off the bat, you turn to me, but maybe you are replacing the exact footprint of the house with the actual floor?
Yes, directly upon the exact footprint.
Using the exhibit, can you walk us through what it is you're doing?
Absolutely.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You can present the case as you wish, not for me to say, but you're building a house on the same footprint as the old house.
That's right.
The real issue was maybe the stormwater. We're not dealing with that now.
Right.
Well, question was asked about the kitchen, and I'm just going to confirm
The layout of the house. Gotcha.
But it's gone now.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm going to confirm that with the expert.
Happy shit. Yeah, I'm with you. Okay.
All right.
Where was the second kitchen that was proposed for about five minutes? Or the wet bar?
Exactly. So on the first floor, our ground level, which we're proposing to elevate from the existing house's condition, just to maintain a positive drainage, you know, away from the first-floor slab. Other than that, the floor plan of the ground level includes a recreation room with a wet bar, which is directly adjacent to the patio in the backyard. So for entertainment purposes, to facilitate backyard
Barbecue.
Barbecues and such, yes, exactly, activities. The rest of the floor plan includes a full bathroom, two other bedrooms, bedrooms five and six, a laundry room, and an office off the foyer. And then, of course, the garage, the existing garage, to remain in the same location. And that's the layout of the first floor. The one staircase that we have here in the front will take us up to the second floor, where the main living
Before we get to the second floor, first floor also has a powder room.
Um
Correct?
Oh, yes, there's a powder room off the hallway. Yes, that's right.
And then I also see a door. When you enter, before you go up the stairs, there is a door in the first-floor hallway.
First-floor hallway?
There's a door.
Right, yeah.
And what's the need for the door? If this is just a recreation area, why do we need a door?
I, I'll have to have the owner address the door in the hallway?
We'll remove the door.
Yeah, okay. I think that was maybe a remnant of a previous scheme, but we would propose to remove the door.
Remove the door.
Okay, thank you.
The one that's designated 107 on the plan that we were talking
106, I have 106.
Mr. O'Neill, would your client be
Yes, 10
106 and 107.
Two pockets.
Agree to have within the resolution of approval, if the board does approve this, that this is a single-family house and no additional kitchens?
That's the application. Absolutely.
Would you include within that resolution?
But that's the current application.
That's the application, yeah. Absolutely. I'd expect the resolution to read that.
Reda?
Excuse me?
I've always wanted to carry a little further, that the resolution would cover deed restriction file, so it would be readily discoverable.
Well
I see additional doors. I'm sorry. 105, before we go up the staircase?
Yes, 105 is a closet door.
Closet door.
Yeah, underneath the stair.
Okay.
Johnny, you concerned that that bar area could just turn into a kitchen real quick?
Yeah, definitely.
I am. I mean, it started out as a two-family house.
Right.
It now erased some features, and it's a one-family house. And I'm not saying this applicant has a long-term plan, but it's down the road. Somebody comes in and says, you know, I could readily convert this. And whether they do it legally or illegally
But they'd have to come back
Well, if it's simple, you get a paint, a couple doors, maybe a new family, I just don't think
The board doesn't usually do a deed restriction unless you're approving a second kitchen, and then you do a deed restriction, requiring that the second kitchen be removed if the house is sold.
It's readily discoverable that this is a zone for single-family homes.
Yeah.
We're going to remove anything that would suggest its conversion to a two-family home.
Yeah.
Now, you're right, they could sell the house to somebody, and somebody could come in and try to turn it into a two-family home. Whether there's a deed restriction there or not, I would posit you they'd probably do that anyway, and a zoning would have to catch them at that.
Right.
I don't think it adds anything to enforcement to put something in a deed restriction that's already prohibited by
We disagree on that, in a simple sense.
And John usually doesn't say that if he doesn't have something behind him.
No, I just think it was a two-family, no question was originally filed. And we erased some features on the plan.
Yep.
And that's all we did.
Why would there be any opposition to that if it really
Well, I'll give you a firsthand example to that. Deed restrictions
Yeah.
Are fine until you get down the line in time.
Explain.
I just did a deal for a house in Livingston that was encumbered by deed restrictions for zoning that had expired 40 years ago or something. So we had to remove, through the process of selling the house, the deed restrictions. I just think deed restrictions, when I was coming up, deed restrictions were disfavored because they're clouding the title as the title moves through from person to person.
Right.
It's not really adding anything. I think if it was something that was additional beyond the ordinance, something like that would be appropriate. But, and if, again, if a deed restriction is in place, let's say 40 years down the line, they legalize two families in all the zones.
I guess right now, from my standpoint, clearly, they had a two-family registration plan. They'd taken that out. They're now asking us to approve a one-family home, okay?
Right.
And replace the one-family home they were living in for 30 years. And if somebody buys it because it's structured so that they could make a two-family, that's on them, not on the current owner. So I think encumbering them further with all the loss they've had already would be beyond my
Yeah, when we're removing the door, we're removing the door.
Yeah, the doors are being removed, everything else, you know.
Okay.
So it's not just something we're going to take out a door.
So they can come back in and hang another door.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We're making a substantial change.
Thank you. Continue, please.
So, moving on to the second floor?
Please.
So from the one staircase in the front to the main living areas of a kitchen, of one kitchen upstairs on the second floor, and toward the rear, which has access to the wood deck, which is smaller than the original deck, its total square footage will be about 430 square feet, which, including the stairs down to the patio. And then there's the four other bedrooms and three bathrooms. So there's a master suite, and two hall bathrooms, and to service the other three bedrooms. And so, yeah, total four bedrooms upstairs, three bathrooms, living, dining, kitchen, and the stair down to the first floor. Let me show the exterior elevations real quick.
Essentially, what the house would Not increasing the height?
It's, in appearance, it's very much, very similar to the existing house. We're working with some of the existing features of where the original door placement is, and where the garage is. But just a few modifications to the actual windows and create a, the two-story foyer that we have, we'll recreate it, actually. And just a few changes for aesthetic reasons. And, yeah, and some additional trim that wasn't on the existing house, and go for a more of a covered portico in the front. And, yeah, it's what you see here. So, and the building height being proposed is 25.7 feet above the average grade.
There's no variances there, sorry.
And, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Asral. No further questions for this witness?
Does the board have any questions of this gentleman? Anyone in the audience have any questions of this gentleman on the information that he has given us only? I see. Mr. O'Neill?
I have no further witnesses, but I would like to sum up a little bit. I recognize that we're asking for impervious coverage variances here, but I'd point out two things to you. Everything we're asking for has been there for 31 years. And normally, the thing you got to worry about with impervious coverage variances is what is it doing to the water? And what is it doing to the neighbors? Well, it's not keeping the neighbor's water off our property, I can tell you that. So there's no negative impacts on any of the neighbors. All the water's going to continue to flow onto this lot. So I think the board would be well within its rights to grant that variance for the pre-existing.
Is there any other questions from the board, Mr. O'Neill? Someone would like to frame resolution, please?
Yeah, I think it's a reasonable request. You're building a house with the same exact footprint as the home that was there for at least 31 years. The water issue, it seems you've explained well enough that will get resolved in the proper, with the proper department at the proper time. And I'll be voting for it. Application 24, call in 78, Michaela Marie Maria Sheehan, 8 Stafford Terrace Block 742, Lot 56, Zone R-2, recommend granting the C variance to construct new, single-family dwelling and deck, legalize an in-ground pool and shed, contrary to Section 430-35, Columns 279, rear yard, open deck, full equipment, pool and patio, 13 in Section 430-NC, rear yard shed. Is there anything else, anything included there, Mr. Johnson?
With the modification to the deck that was discussed.
With the modification to the deck as was discussed, and
And maybe you want to put in there, there'll be no impact of water to the neighbors, something to that effect?
Well, that was testimony, certainly.
Yeah, I will stand by that. With the representation that
Yes, because we're not doing it anywhere.
Right.
With the representation that the stormwater mitigation measures will be addressed, that you will get approved stormwater mitigation measure prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Yes.
As well said.
Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Crowe. Yes.
Jaskelitz.
Yeah.
Ready.
Yes.
Williams.
Yep.
For now. Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Can I have five minutes before the next minute?
Five minutes, yes.
Shall we have five minutes here, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, of course. Five minutes, please. Thank you.
Application 2437, and now ticker 16 North Brunswick Road, Lot 542, Lot 18, Zone B5,
preliminary and final site planned with C, D variances for construction of Preliminary and final site planned with C, D variances for construction of four condo units. Mr. O'Neill, you're on.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Joseph O'Neill, once again, on behalf of the applicants. I have been looking at this lot with the driveway to nowhere for I don't know how long. So here we are now with an application for this development. Looking at the hour, I'd like to get right to it and introduce Mr. Miola. He'll walk us through.
Raise your right hand, please, to swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Miola, you are under oath, so I'm going to ask you, didn't you retire at some point?
I have clients who keep asking me to do one more project.
You have been, you have been before this board many times. Your licenses are still in order. So I would submit, Mr. Miola, once again, as an expert in civil engineering.
He's excellent.
Mr. Miola, could you walk us through your plans?
Okay, what we have on sheet one, to get everybody oriented, the left, upper left-hand corner is the existing conditions as it is today. And as Joe pointed out, all there are is some driveways that go through here that went out to the street behind it.
Excuse me, Mr. Miola, is that still going to be an exit?
No.
So that's going to be cut off?
That's, that's, everything on the property is gone. I mean, the driveway on the neighbor's property is the neighbor's driveway, it's up to him. But it's not going to go anywhere. He comes in from the other street in the back anyway.
I was at the property this evening. I was on Nakomis.
Yep.
Nakomis has a driveway that goes to this property.
Yes.
On Bevwick Road. Is that going to be closed off, or is that going to be opened?
No, it's going to be closed off. Look, it's not part of this project that's getting... We're not going to take the rest of the driveway out on Nakomis because the guy in that house may want it, it's up to him. But it's not going to have a cut through anymore.
Okay.
So everything that's on the property that's facing North Bevwick Road will be gone with this project.
The trees, the rocks, whatever, is that what you're referring to of everything being gone? Okay.
Can you identify that map just in the reference?
I'm sorry, what was that, John?
Identify the map.
Yes, we're talking about a site plan done by my office, revision number five, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, which is what everybody should be dealing with.
Are we?
Hold on. Hold on.
Well, is that the last map that you reviewed?
Yes, it is.
So all these little ones are from thirty, they're all gone?
Seems that's it.
Okay.
Get rid of them.
And this is it?
Seems so.
You said revision five?
Revision five.
Should be revision five, yes.
So it looks like it's the big one.
Yes, two twenty-eight. I have, I have another question, Mr. Miola.
Sure.
I don't know whether you're the right person to ask this question. A house on Nakomis, on this property, there is a sign that has the optometrist Lane and I think it's Valhalla Records.
Yeah.
And they have sixteen Bevwick Road. And that's on this property. But there's a house in the back of this property.
Yeah.
And that's where Dr. Lane, I don't know whether he's still an optometrist, and Valhalla Records have a sign on the door also. Is this all going to be connected? Is that house coming down? So this is, the house is a separate property altogether?
The house is a totally separate property, but you're absolutely right. They used to come in from North Bevwick Road through these driveways and meander back there. That's going to be gone.
Okay.
There's no easement or whatever associated with that driveway? Just got built over done?
That's right.
Just did it, they just did it.
And it's not any kind of blockway property back there. It's got road access on the road behind, so there's no need...
Yeah, they're going to, they're going to use Nakomis, that's what they're going to do.
Okay, so what are we proposing?
In the middle of the upper part of the page is the layout of what's happening. We're proposing a four-unit townhouse development to the rear, I guess, if that's right, you can describe it, ten feet off the rear property line. That allows for a garage plus parking in front of the garage and enough room to turn around and come back out to North Bevwick Road.
Now, you coordinated with the township regarding the improvement project along that roadway, right?
Yes.
And they did what we were asking them to do?
No. We, we, we ran into a problem because we were, because Brandon from engineering had called and warned us that they're going to be redoing the improvement projects on North Bevwick Road. My client pushed me, we rushed, got a little drawing out for the water and sewer connections. First, they didn't want, we were going to put one connection in and then break it off on our... They didn't want that. They wanted separate connections. We gave them the separate connections. They refused to give us permits because they said it's not an approved project. I said, well, you know, my client's willing to gamble and he'll spend the money because otherwise, we're going to be tearing up a perfectly brand-new development road, you know, with all the improvements. So unfortunately, we're going to have to go that way. But we tried.
We will replace that, John.
Yep.
So go ahead.
So the difference in terms of what's out there now and what shows on your plan is will be the result of ripping up what's out there now?
Yep, we'll, we'll, I'll check the plan and see what we have to modify, if anything. I believe the paver sidewalk is there yet.
Yeah, I think we just got to open the road.
Yeah.
Put the curb cut away.
No, the streetscape is completed. Yeah. That's what I was, because we spoke in January when it was done. And I recommended that you resurvey to show that we, where the, where the now existing sidewalk is and the curb cut, and that's, that wasn't provided. So now we really don't know how these improvements are going to work with the current sidewalk. Because the current sidewalk doesn't meander like that one does. And we don't know where the curb, where the, where the...
So that's a more basic question. Do you know if the township's going to prohibit you from doing anything to that sidewalk for a certain period of time? Like they have a paver, a paver road, you can't cut it open for five years?
Yep, I know that, and that's where the fight's going to occur. You know, because we tried, you know, and your departments wouldn't give us permits.
I don't think I'm probably the one to be addressing this issue. I don't know who is.
Just wanted to point it out to the board. I know Tom had brought it up. So I just kind of discuss it here. Well, obviously, you're going to have to wait. I think they did the time.
We can deal with the plan, take the scenario that the board approves the plan, but you can't build it.
Well, at least for a certain period of time. Yep.
Why would we do that?
Well, you only get protection for a couple of years. And if it's that standard, you can't open the road for five years, which is the company nominee, you'll be back here again, right?
Or we're going to have to ask for extension if we can't get it within the time. Because I believe we're approved, if we get a site plan approval, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a long time since I've had a look it up. We got, an approval runs for three years, and I believe you can ask for two one-year extensions. That's the way I remember it, but I haven't looked up the rules in a long time.
Until, until the town, until we know what the town's actually going to be doing on it, we, we don't have that plan, do we? We don't know what they're going to do for sure.
But that section is completed, but...
No, it's done already.
Okay, that's all done.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to get it in.
Okay, okay.
And they're saying, they're saying five years, you can't open it, but in the case of a hardship?
Yeah.
That's what we plan to argue to the town.
Right, okay.
It's their prohibition.
I don't know how that was constructed. I had no involvement with it. And if it was CDBG money, which would go to, that's the community development grant money, I don't know whether that was used for that improvement in that location or not.
But I don't think that, that has anything to do with the five years and the hardship.
No, it might be more.
I don't think so.
I don't know.
That's not something that this board could address one way or the other.
I don't think, I don't think so, but I don't, I agree we can address that, but I don't think it is.
I agree with Mr. Wilson.
Okay, I, the township has completed that section of Bevwick Road. Your client is willing to take a chance, my terminology, take a chance that you're going to get approval to do a new curb cut on property that has been completed.
That's right.
Am I understanding that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Keep going, Mr. Miola. Okay. So we got four units back there, right?
Pardon?
We're proposing four units?
Yeah, we're proposing four units. Each will have a garage and parking in front of the garage. Mr. Lamontowicz is correct. We don't necessarily need the handicap and the parking spot in the front. We can eliminate them. I think it would work. It would be tight, but I think it would work, but, you know...
I, I mentioned the EV, which you don't, you only need an EV for five or more units. The handicap, I, I believe you...
Yeah, but I, I thought, and I'm going to check, research it further, but I believe the handicap can be provided in front of the hat, like if one of the units becomes a handicapped person, that can be their handicap spot, and they just designate it.
Yes, that's correct.
Because it's a residential garage, because it's a handicap spot.
Yeah.
And I was thinking, the same thing could probably occur. If somebody has an electric vehicle car, they could put the connection unit in the garage and then just plug it in. And the right-hand side is the grading, so see how everything works. And everything is basically pitching from the back out to the road. We're collecting all the runoff by a pair of drywells on the front left side, which will work, it's fine.
Let's talk about the variances in the back.
Pardon?
Want to get to the variances?
Yeah, okay.
Let's take with the drainage for a bit, because right now, again, we don't know vertically or horizontally where that new streetscape is. So at some point, that drywall is going to overflow because it only catches the difference in impervious. And the way the plan is set up right now, once the water overflows, it stays in the parking lot. It doesn't go anywhere. It can't flow out because it is an elevation higher by the driveway than there is on top of the driveway.
Is that correct, Mr. Miola? The, the existing plan does not have the correct elevation of the sidewalks?
Well, because they, because of the improvement, because we started where they did the improvement. And Tom is pointing out that we should update it. Hopefully, it didn't change a heck of a lot because there's all driveways on that side, but you're right, we should double-check it just to see if there's any change. I don't, if there's a change, it's going to be minor. You know, I don't think there's going to be any major change because otherwise, they'd be affecting all the driveways in all those homes and, and the apartment complex that are right of us. You know, that, that they're all existing conditions that they got to work with.
I kind of remember more, sorry, on that, because I think it's a important point, so... Your concern is with the current flow and topography of the land, all right?
There's a couple of things. Number one, the streetscape sidewalk is wider than the sidewalk that's shown on the plan right now.
Okay.
Also, when they do the streetscape, they have to correct slopes on the sidewalk because of ADA and all the other stuff. And that old sidewalk was, was all over the place as far as slopes go. So we have, we have a vertical issue with where the sidewalk is, and then we have a horizontal with how far does that sidewalk now go into the site? Because there's already going to be, there's already a non-conforming aisle with, it's supposed to be twenty-five, it scales to about nineteen. And, you know, if that sidewalk is farther into the property, then that's even less space from new...
And it is now, and what the town has completed?
The town completed it, you know, like, like December.
Yeah, so it is wider.
I believe it is.
I will get out there and locate it.
If you take the proposed, the, the EV and the handicap out, like he said?
Yes.
Then that should suffice?
That, that helps.
For the wider sidewalk?
It'll help, yeah, but what I'm saying is, you're still, you still have issues with getting in and out of that property.
The, the issue, the main issue, in my mind, with widening the sidewalk is that the property line for North Bevwick Road is almost the curb line that was there. So the existing sidewalk was on our property without any easement. If they widened it, they even went further on this property without any permission.
Okay. And there's no easement, there's no current survey that shows the post-sidewalk improvement?
No, I have to go out and not locate. Now I understand what Tom was driving at. I'll, I'll go out and have the crew relocate what's in the front, just to make sure that...
Mr. Miola, I don't want to be insulting to you, but there's a lot of things that I'm hearing from you that you have to recheck. You're presenting something to us, but yet every time our engineer is asking a question, you're saying you have to go back and check. Does your plan have to be changed due to Mr. Lamontowicz's questions?
I, I would not think. The only issue we're talking about is the changes with the reconstruction of North Bevwick Road. That's the difference.
But he's also referencing the parking issue, trying to get into these units.
Yeah, that, that, that is the difference in opinion. I, I think they would have worked originally, what we had even with the parking spot. But without the parking spot, they'll work better.
Okay.
When you say work better, the car is going to back into South Bevwick Road or not?
No, there's enough room to turn around on it, so...
Madam Chair, could I just have a moment with my witness?
Surely, please.
From the garage?
Mr. Miola, if you'd like some time to talk with you.
But, but we don't know. Right, right, but see, we don't know the sidewalk. We don't know. So we'll have to back down, back down. I don't know about this too.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair and members of the board, with your permission, I would like to ask Mr. Miola to reexamine the existing conditions on the site, come back and testify, maybe at another meeting, as to what those conditions are. With your permission, I'd just like to put up our architect to go through what it is we're proposing in this units themselves, to get your impressions of that.
I agree.
Thank you.
On the rear end, you know, what is the, how many feet?
This is the architect's.
Thank you, the architect's coming up.
You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your names, by your last name.
My name is Jonathan Babula, B A B U L A. I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey. My, my license is current and in... Uh, my, uh, my license is current and in good standing, and I've been practicing architecture for about 20 years now. And I have testified before this board, uh, before, and about 20 other boards throughout New Jersey.
Why don't you walk us through what the applicant is actually proposing here for the units? Give the board a little flavor of that.
Sure. So I'm going to start with the, the first floor plan, which is sheet page A 2.1. And what we are proposing is four identical townhouse units, uh, which are side by side to each other. They are two stories with the basement. When you walk in the front door, you have a two-story foyer with stairs to the left, to the second floor, a coat closet towards the back of that foyer area. That leads into a kind of transition mudroom area that gives you access to the one-car garage and a powder room to the left, as well as the stairs down to the basement. Uh, beyond that, you have an open concept between the family room and kitchen in the, in the rear, and you also have, um, access to the backyard.
Do you think these were a slab or there is a basement?
There is a basement, it will be a full basement.
You say access to the backyard?
Mm-hmm.
There is a backyard?
Uh, well, it's, there's only 10 feet back there, so it's very minimal, but there, there is access there.
Two, thanks, Paul.
Yes. On the second floor, as you come up the stairs, you have a L-shaped hallway. In the front, we have the primary bedroom with the walk-in closet and private bathroom on the right side. Uh, there is a hall bathroom to the left and then two identical bedrooms in the rear with closets.
How many bedrooms in each one of these?
I'm sorry?
How many bedrooms?
Oh, it's a total of three bedrooms. Uh, going back to sheet A 2.0, this is the, the basement plan, which is going to contain the utilities and the washer and dryer.
Are there any exits from the basement?
No, there's not, just the stairs that lead up to the foyer. And then we turn into sheet A 1.0, the front elevation. Um, as you can see, we have some peaks to give us some architecture or character, uh, some overhangs, again, to give it some, uh, character and not make a flat facade. And, um, we are going to use a battening board siding, vertical battening board siding, a mixture of metal roofing and asphalt shingles.
What's the date of that plan?
Uh, 11/19/24.
Because I'm looking at the sheet that we have, and it doesn't have that dormer in the middle. And it looks like the front elevation that we have is slightly different.
It is.
What is the date of those plans?
These are 11/19/24, and there's no revision here.
Yeah, we have it totally intact.
We can submit this as an exhibit then?
Sure, I just want to make sure that...
Parking is A1.
This dormer here in the attic, that is just for character, just to break up the facade of the, um, the roof line here.
That's your only change from this, right?
Yeah.
There's no access to it?
No, I mean, each unit will have their own pull-down stairs for storage in the attic, but this is, it's not going to be for any living, living space or anything like that.
Are these going to be rental or for sale?
That's to be determined.
Yeah.
Where's the HDAC units?
The, one is going to be in the basement, and usually if it's two zones, one will be in the basement and one will be in the attic space.
No outside unit?
Where's the compressor going to be?
Uh, the compressors will be, I guess, in the back.
You guess?
Yeah. I don't know if it's on the site plan or not, or, um...
You said there was 10 feet on the revised plan dated February 24th to the rear yard.
Yeah, just about 10 feet, yes.
I think that's more...
I'm going to look at the engineer's...
That's more a question for Mr. Miola. I'm sorry.
Well, you're going to come back?
I got to come back. Yeah. Yeah, so he's really not going to be able to answer that.
Well, it'll be kind of a revised submission because you're going to drop the ADA and the EV space?
Yeah, he's going to realign the sidewalk, we're going to take a look at that specific question.
See what happens with the elevations. Is it going to be gas heat?
Yes, it will be gas heat.
Well, you need a rear yard variance.
We will need a rear yard variance regardless.
Yep. So you may need more of a rear yard variance depending on where those compressors are held, right?
Well, accessories.
The, the board is able...
Accessory equivalent in the rear yard?
...compressors and the variance, hundreds of them.
Yes, I've gained a little flavor for that tonight.
So I don't think it's going to change.
No, we'll, we'll call it out and we'll get whatever's necessary.
The only place to put them is the rear yard, right?
Well, we could figure out something in the attic if you want to do something on the roof, but I don't think that's going to be approved. But I don't know.
What, what is the side yard to that structure, do you know?
What are they?
Or is that a planned question?
That's more, that's more of a question.
Yes.
Is it right on the property line?
It's very close.
There is no side yard.
I think the side yard's about three and a half feet.
Yeah.
Three and a half foot side yards.
Is there a special construction involved with that wall or not?
Yeah, these walls are required to be fire-rated walls, and that's why there's no windows there either. So it, um, that's also a building code requirement.
How far do they have to be away from the property line to have penetration or windows?
Uh, five feet, it gives you a certain percentage of openings, and then 10 feet you're allowed as much as you want, I believe.
Those walls, those rear walls are along bedrooms?
Uh, these...
Bedrooms are on the outside walls?
Yes, yes.
So they'll have a front window and a...
Yes, and then, uh, these windows in the back are for the, the rear bedrooms.
So the end units don't get any better light near than the interior units?
No. Correct.
Uh, Mr. Chadwick, I don't want to put you or Mr. Lamont on the spot here tonight, but since we're going to adjourn this hearing, perhaps we can arrange some kind of meeting with the professionals to go over these plans with some details.
Sounds like a great idea. That's a great idea.
Sounds wonderful to me. I don't have anything else to do.
Can't help you with that. Thank you, sir. I don't have any further questions for this witness at that time.
I assume you're going to bring both of these witnesses back?
Everyone's coming back.
Everyone's coming back.
When?
Are you done tonight?
I believe we are done.
Yes. Would you like to carry?
Please.
Okay. So I believe there may be members of the audience here that are interested in this application. Just so you know, this application is not complete. There are, both of these witnesses are going to complete their testimony at a later date, at which point they will be available to answer any questions members of the audience may have.
You have a question?
Come up, please.
I will be notified.
Sir?
We're going to tell you the new date in a, in a few minutes. And then you'll be able to ask any questions that you have.
December 3rd or 10th, which date do you want it to be?
December 3rd or 10th, do you? December 3rd.
December 3rd or 10th?
12/3.
It's December.
Yeah, I'm sorry, which day?
December 3rd, I believe, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I ask that this matter be carried to December 3rd without further notice, and I will give all necessary extensions through the end of December.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And maybe submit the most recent architectural plans in the meantime?
I've already got that revised, uh, plans as they're developed.
Maybe you want to have a get-together with Tom and myself and whatever other people you want to bring along, uh, with that's being revisions.
We appreciate that very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairmanwoman, I think, did we want to, you know, the gentleman had a question?
Well, did you hear, did you hear, did you hear the new date? December 3rd? No, no, 7/30.
You're going to come up, please, sir? Sir, sir?
Come up to the table, please.
May we have your name and address, please?
Absolutely.
Gustavo Moreira, 10 Nokomis Avenue, last name is M-O-R-E-I-R-A. Uh, my question is on December 3rd, 7:30, you think this will be the first party today because, you know, we're going to...
We have, we have no way of knowing that, it depends on the agenda.
We're going to be here until 10 o'clock, we don't work after 10.
No.
Who the residential's are going to go first?
Okay.
Always have.
So how fast, say, one?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Most adjourned?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.